Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It is a good morning. At this time, we will open up our board meeting today. It is the October 28th work session meeting, and we will call it to order at this time. Would you please all stand with me? We'll do the pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do our Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. We will go right into our strategic planning, so I turn that over to our superintendent, Dr. Prince, please.
All right. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Excited to be back again. It's crazy how quickly the year passes as we kind of close in at the end of October. And finally, from what I understand, we're going to get a little bit of a cold front to cool the weather off a little bit. Just want to kind of go through, Lydia, if you could just advance one slide, which is our goals. So as you know, after today, we don't have a workshop until January. We will have some significant updates for you in January with regards to how our students performed on the PM2, kind of a mid-year update, which Dr. Summer will provide. We will have some updates on some of the initiatives we have with regards to goal number three, which is reinvesting, reimagining, and rejuvenating schools in the green zone. I think we're moving along, and we will have some updates for the board in January as well. And then some updates on classrooms to careers and mental health. So it's kind of the January point is kind of our temperature check for the mid-year, and I would anticipate that will probably be the longest meeting we will have from a workshop perspective, because we're going to be getting and going into a deep dive on a number of things. And also, decision points for the board with regards to some initiatives that we have planned. Today, our agenda is this: We're going to have Ms. Martin and Dejean Jackson sharing basically a proposal much like what the county has on their third floor. We've had some recent retirements, and some of these retirees had collected literally 100 years of history. It was fascinating to look at all the things, the rich history that St. Lucie County has that we'd like to memorialize, and that has been a project of Ms. Jackson, Dejean Jackson, and kind of trying to conceptualize and put together what that would look like. Of course, the board approves everything. This is only the proposal for kind of what the vision would be, what it would look like, and we would come back to the board once we had formed a committee to kind of look at what are the main things in our history that is over 100 years of time? What are the things we want represented and how we want that represented? We also have Mr. O'Leary with a construction update. We have some important initiatives, and also, if you drive down Gatlin Parkway, which is Tradition Parkway going west, you'll see the walls have gone up on the new K-8, and that school, he's going to provide an update. I'd like to report we're on time, on budget, on schedule to open that school. And because we are also, we've got a very bold initiative with regards to reinvesting and rejuvenating the Fort Pierce area with the combining of a few of our elementary schools and middle schools, we're going to be putting out an RFQ for building that K-8 now so that we can, if our property sales move the way we hope they do, that we're going to be ready to build that school as quickly as possible, because I always say that every student, regardless of their zip code, delivers, deserves a first-class public education, and we want to make sure that we keep our promises to our communities. And lastly, you have this, mine's a little folded because it's been in my pocket. You will be selecting at the end of the meeting today the name of the new K-8 that is going to open in August of 2026, and Dr. Wild will facilitate that. And I get to be the one excitedly that gets to count the votes. So we will make sure that somebody's looking over my shoulder so that I don't, that I count every single vote and I count it correctly. So with that being said, I'd also like, on a personal note, tomorrow, we have our legislative, basically, it's our annual legislative meeting where we kind of go through what we're lobbying for with the legislative sessions, and I will be speaking at that tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. at the Indian River State College. I know that it was on the calendars for some of our board members. It's not like it's a long time. I think I have three minutes. I feel like I'm a public speaker at one of our board meetings, so it's like speed dating. But I will be speaking at that, and then very shortly after that, I just want to let you know that I will be traveling to Gainesville, because my very significant match is being played in the Elite Eight of the 5A volleyball tournament, which is the Legacy Lions against the Gainesville High School somethings. Not sure who they are.
The Hurricanes.
The Hurricanes, thank you. Thank you. I think, as a graduate of University of Florida, I would think I would know that, but I don't. But I will be attending that, and we'll be turning around, and Coach Ingersoll over here will be traveling to that as well. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to our chief of communications, Lydia Martin and Dejean Jackson, for the first presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Today, we are excited to share a concept that brings our district's story to life: A Timeline or History Wall for the District Office. This visual installation will highlight key milestones, leadership transitions, pivotal moments that have shaped who we are today. From our earliest days to our most recent achievements, it will reflect the evolution of our district through the lens of our superintendents, board members, and the initiatives that have defined our progress. More than a display, this wall will serve as a daily reminder of our shared commitment to educational excellence, innovation, and the legacy we continue to build together. We look forward to showing you how this concept can inspire pride, reflection, and connection for all that walk through our doors. At this time, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Dejean Jackson, and she will take us a step back in time.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, Superintendent Prince. It's exciting to be here and share this concept with you. Let's take a step back in time to the early 1900s. Prior to that, most public education was taught in homes of the earliest settlers in Fort Pierce. Schooling was made available in several different homes and packing houses with a county-paid teacher. Now, a local doctor, Dr. C. P. Platt, served as the first superintendent of schools, being appointed July 1, 1905, after St. Lucie County was developed, breaking away from Brevard Now, the purpose of the timeline is to capture these moments and to recognize significant people, places, and events in times within an organization's history. This time's capsule will give our future generations a glimpse back into St. Lucie Public Schools' history. Pictured is one of the oldest buildings in St. Lucie Public Schools. It has transformed from the Yellow Brick Schoolhouse to Fort Pierce Elementary, Fort Pierce Magnet School of the Arts, where it was included in the Historic Registry, to its current school that we all know and love, the Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucie.
So what you see here is a proof of concept of what the timeline or history wall could look like. And as we go through the presentation, we'll talk a little bit about the location, also some challenges, barriers that we have in front of us that we know that we can overcome. But essentially, the timeline would be broken down into different decades, and with each decade, we would be able to highlight significant milestones, significant individuals that have contributed greatly to our history. And we're going to look at throughout this presentation, take a deeper dive into what that could look like. But basically, this is from floor to ceiling, and as you'll learn in a little bit, it could stretch 77 feet. So we have a good deal of space for this wall, and just as you're going through this, each one of the decades would take about five to six feet in width. So we do have a nice amount of space, and so that we can go a little bit deeper into what you see here. Once again, this is not to scale. This is just kind of a bird's-eye view of what this could look like. So if we pull out a few pieces, and we have a little bit more in depth, but part of the information included on the wall would be, of course, when each school was opened, we would also have an opportunity to highlight notable achievements, spotlight on significant milestones with schools, and even if there was an individual person that we want to go deeper with their contributions. These are the key features that we will include. We will have a timeline with including school board members, superintendents, school construction, as I mentioned, and then spotlights on people, historical, and significant events, state or national recognitions, and other notable achievements.
Now, if you take a look at the picture there, that's an actual picture of the first school in St. Lucie County. We'll also showcase through visual imagery, actual photographs like the one you see pictured Now, with our timeline, we'll indicate our school board members and superintendents. They will frame the timeline's history. The school board members will be noted by board membership, identifying the chair and vice chair during the period of history that they serve, along with their time of service and their significant accomplishments. In addition to that, the superintendents will be identified by their name, photo, and time of service. We'll have the opportunity to share our school board members on a video scroll to include all the board members' photographs, much like you see when you come into the board meetings, that will scroll through with other visual imagery. Now, with the construction of schools, we've had an explosive amount of schools that have been constructed in St. Lucie County. We'll indicate the first principal, the opening year, and in some cases, we have had schools that have closed. I know that when I attended Port St. Lucie Elementary as a young girl, that school was here, and then the home of the Bobcats left. So we'll indicate the year of closing of those schools. We'll also have a picture and other notable information included. Through the spotlight, we'll be able to capture key members in our community, very much like Dr. Samuel S. Gaines, the longest-serving school board member in all of St. Lucie County. We'll be able to include a QR code for scanning, and with that, you'll be able to hear his voice, you'll be able to see videos of some significant accomplishments, you'll also have a link to a website to be able to capture these images. All of this is included with the timeline. In addition to that, there are notable achievements that we have the ability to share, much like when Lincoln Park won 500 games. We'll be able to highlight key people like Coach Wendell Adams, who not only serves as a mentor to others, but also this significant achievement, again, through either a QR code, video imagery, that are shared along with those photos.
Can I interject, Dejean, real quick?
Yes.
Just, I just think it's cool with some of the concepts that they came up with. It was with regards to the QR codes, you know, we've got areas in our hallways for these kind of panels, these screens, so it's almost like a museum, how it's interactive. Like, if you're interested in something, you can scan the QR code and get more information about it, or play the video, or it's a really kind of a, I think, unique and sets us apart from any other kind of a timeline that you've seen in some of these buildings, where there's just been a lot of intentionality of thought that has gone into this. And I want to thank, you know, Dejean and Lydia and the team for really coming up with some, when I saw some of the pictures, which you're about to see, I was like, oh, this is so cool. But keep going, I'm sorry. I just get excited. I'm a history buff, anyway.
All right. So that takes us to the next steps after, you know, moving forward, we gain consensus that this is a concept we want to pursue. We continue the information gathering phase, and Dejean has done a tremendous amount of research already in conjunction with people in the community and the Historical Society. So we do have a lot of information, but we are continuing that. So final research will be conducted, and then we will have a committee that will eventually review and make the final proposal of the items to include on the timeline.
Now, if you check out the picture that's there, this is actually from Fort Pierce High School, and there are some noteworthy people that are within that picture itself. Number 49 is Dale Cassons, and you might recognize the name because it is also the name of a school, but you might ask yourself, who was Dale Cassons? So Dale Cassons was a Florida citrus farmer, businessman, and a politician who served in the Florida House of Representatives from 1977 to 1978. The Dale Cassons Education Complex in Fort Pierce, Florida, is named in his honor, serving students who are seeking to achieve their educational goals. Now, he was a successful citrus farmer, and in St. Lucie, that was a lot of the business that was here. So he also was a graduate of the University of Florida in 1957, so UF keeps coming up today.
So as I mentioned, we would propose that we have a timeline committee formed, and the members of the committee would be five that are appointed by school board members. We would have five that are recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board that are representative of the community, and then we would have some at-large former and current employees that are recommended by the superintendent and approved by the board. So that would be 15 individuals that would be working with us as we go through all of the information, and then we would present to the said individuals of this committee the information that we gather for each decade, and then we would gain consensus on which five to six, maybe seven items that we would include for that decade on the timeline. The responsibility of this committee is we would make sure that the information that we're moving forward with is accurate. We would ensure that the timeline reflects a broad range of perspectives and that it captures contributions and milestones from across all areas and all communities.
And we're so thankful for the partnerships, the collaboration that we have within St. Lucie County. This photo is actually from the Historical Society and donated by Jay Stewart, and this is just an image of a classroom that was here in St. Lucie County.
So after we conduct all of the information gathering, we form our committee, that is when a lot of the hard work starts, and that is where we have our graphic artist. She is in my department, Lauren Pesco. This is her visual representation of what we asked for, and she's done a fantastic job. But that is going to actually be able to place those items on a scale model, being aware of physical barriers that we may encounter when we're installing this onto the wall. So I wanted to show you where the proposed area is, and Dejean, if you can click a couple times, this is the Human Resources hallway, all right? So this is Human Resources, just to orient you, this is student assignment, and we have security down here at the end, as well as the Ed Foundation. This is what is currently there, if you can just hold there for a second. Currently, we have the Destination District sticker on this wall, and if we take the measurements from the beginning of the security office all the way down to the hallway, we have 77 feet, and that is where we're proposed to have this wall. So when we're creating this, we need to be cognizant of doorways that we have to design around, and if you want to click the next ones. We also have some things that are on the wall that we may be able to move, we may need to design around it. We've got a fire extinguisher here. Dr. Prince had mentioned these outlets, these are for digital screens, so that's something we can use to our advantage, as well as other thermostats, things like that. So those are all things that, as we're designing it and we're placing those items on that scale model, we need to make sure that we're aware of that. Now, we have this Destination District sticker that I think is wonderful. We do need to make some updates to it, so when we remove it, we have a plan to be able to relocate that into another area. So after we place these items on the scale wall, on the scale model, keep clicking, that is where the superintendent would make a recommendation to the board for review and final approval. That is where you would have the opportunity to review all of the items for each of the decades and be able to give feedback and suggestions if needed, and review and approve.
So just like the students in this picture at the Yellow Brick School thought about the mark that they were going to leave on the community, we have the ability to make a mark, a lasting impact, with this timeline proposal. We've shared the steps throughout this process of how we can make history, and with all of the assembly and the placement of the timeline, with your recommendation, we have the ability to do that. At one time, Fort Pierce Central, that's pictured here, was in its estate on Edwards Road, and then it moved to 25th Street. When we think about the changes that have been made, we need to capture this time capsule here and now, and we look forward to being able to hear your thoughts and recommendation in moving forward with our timeline for St. Lucie Public Schools.
And we're open to any questions, comments, feedback?
I wanted to make one comment before we open it up for questions, if that's okay, Madam Chair. So, you know, I can kind of see this as going a real slow roll, you know, and also workshopping some things as we go along, because what we're finding is, as information gets out, we have people that are coming forward with images, pictures, or, you know, something that we might want to use. You know, this is not going to be a finished product, we're just going to, next week, oh, here, take a look, it's done. This is going to be a longer process. I want to make sure that you also know that with regards to the proposed committee, that's not set in stone either. You know, we tried to look at it kind of like the Citizens Advisory Committee for the referendum dollars. We wanted to make sure we had board member representation. We also wanted to be able to tap into former employees, you know, the Chris Harrisons of the world that retired that have so much history, that they're so aware of the rich history of the district, and also people from the community that may have been, you know, political folks, or, you know, anybody that, from the community that wanted to have some input. But we wanted it to be balanced and not just focused on, you know, through the eyes of one lens. We wanted multiple voices, and to create kind of a menu of options for the board to choose from with regards to what, you know, collectively, the board thinks are the most important as we look at each decade. And I think that that's a really creative thinking by the team, is looking at it by decades. You know, five or six feet is a lot of space, and we're able to put a lot of information there, especially utilizing QR codes, that if people are interested in one particular thing, they can use the QR code, or there will be visual platforms, like the screens, that they can participate in the history of our district. So I'm excited, and I wanted to get feedback from the board if you are good to move forward with the next steps to this project.
Board members, it's open for comments.
You touched on it lightly, and this is a great project. What do you think will be the time commitment for our committee members? I mean, like, once a month for an hour or two, or what's the general thought? So when we approach somebody, we can like, say, well, I don't know, whatever, in some type of direction?
I think that's probably, once we actually get to that point, it may be, you know, three or four meetings spread over a few months. The idea is to be very efficient with meeting with the board, the committee members, so it's definitely something that we want to make sure we have all of the information ahead of time before we start involving them, so that we're not wasting time. And we understand, probably, you know, many of the members who will be involved, you know, have their own jobs and own things going on, so we definitely want to be cognizant of that and plan to be, you know, thinking about that as we move forward.
And to your point, Mr. Ingersoll, I think our goal would be to, okay, bring the committee together, you know, we've got a couple of decades, here are 10 or 15 significant things that have happened, can we pare this down to five? You know, what's the recommendation of the committee? Because we do want to be efficient and also be mindful that people, when they take their time to do this, that they're going to, we're going to move on it.
So three is the first one?
Yeah.
Board members?
I think it's an awesome, awesome project. And, but, how long are we looking for? Is this going to be a year-long project? How, I mean, what are we looking at?
I think that sounds about right. I'm anticipating, you know, Dejean has done a lot of the groundwork already in just preparation for putting the concept together. We do have a few places that we're looking for more information, or we're trying to hunt down some photos, but generally speaking, we're nearing the end of the research phase. I'll let Dejean talk a little bit more about that, but I think a year out and, you know, end of summer, beginning of the school year next year, being ready to move forward with the installation, I think is very realistic.
Okay. And it's going to be in this hallway right here?
It's going to be in the HR hallway, so where we have the Destination District sticker now. That Destination District sticker just takes up half of one section, but the timeline would be the entire right-hand side of the wall, and it covers 77 feet. Now, the 77 feet is not continuous because there are doorways, you know, dividers, things like that, but that would be the proposed location, because that's where most of our foot traffic is from the public, as well as employees, and then, you know... And then, you know, we don't end at 2020. We're going to have 2030, 2040, 2050. I won't be around here then, but other people will be. And so the idea would be continue that on this side of the hallway, so that it would just continue.
I just wanted to make sure that where it is going to start is going to be where people are actually going to be able to see it.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, so it's not in the main view. It would be off to one of the halls. So my suggestion would be that there is some entrance that captures the eye to say, this hall here, if you want to get this type of history, people could go to. Because, you know, everybody's not going to walk down that hall unless there's something that's pointing them that way for a reason.
Absolutely. That's an excellent point. And yes, we would denote that hallway with something above it, around it, to let the public know that this is where they can see the timeline.
Now, Dr. Prince knows, I've talked with him several times about the history wall. And my vision was, from the beginning, is that we definitely have a section where all of the photos of all of the past board members could be displayed. And I know that that's a really hard thing to do because, you know, people have died off, et cetera. But as much as possible, to make sure that we have that where all board members are displayed, so that our young people and our future generation can actually see pictures and photos of each board member, especially those that would want to see, that would need that to help propel them. You know, history is a wonderful thing because it really helps propel our future generation, young people of what they can accomplish and what they can do. But I have some ideas myself that I would like to put input to as well, and I'm sure other board members do as well, you know, in highlighting those moments, those special moments. I don't know if we've ever had someone do a student council before, Ms. Hawley, but that's an achievable, a notable achievement that can be put there, as well as me being the first black female, St. Lucie County, and I started the Speakers Bureau. So certain notable achievements, we just want to go a little more deeper into. But I do agree with Dr. Prince in that, you know, this wall can expand as large as it is, and as long as the area that you're choosing, we have to be very balanced with what we actually put on that wall. And I find it really intriguing that someone can go and take their phone and, you know, QR and hear voice, you know, such as Dr. Gaines' voice and other voices that may still be living to bring forth the wall. So it's really exciting. I'm very, I've been talking about this from the last few superintendents about this wall. So I'm really excited that it is coming to fruition now. Board members, any more comments?
I would like to add to your point, Dr. Mills. You know, we also talked about, you know, if you conceptualize, you know, every five feet is like a decade, that's a really pretty significant amount of space. And if you look at the, the wall is really framed by the board members. The board members are the most important and prominent piece of the wall, simply because, you know, they're elected by the public and that, you know, there's a significant amount of history. Because I talked to staff, did I not just talk to you guys about this? Yeah, didn't I?
Yes.
Yes, I did. So it's really important that, because, you know, board members really represent a moment in time, you know, as they're elected and the things that are happening in our country. So I can assure you that that's going to be a very prominent component of what we see and envision for this.
I just wanted to say, Madam Chair, that Dale Kessin, that information, I mean, was, you know, I always wondered who he was. So thank you for that. And the more we learn about these, you know, it puts things into perspective, how it is that we are where we are right now. How did we come to here? You know? And it makes you, I think, appreciate, you know, where we are right now and the people that has, you know, helped to make us a success that we are. So in that respect, I am so appreciative to Dr. Mills for suggesting this or, you know, and just making it a reality, because we don't know, you know? And when we know, you know, it's a different perspective, you know? So thank you.
This is going to be incredible, and it's going to be overwhelming with all the information and everyone's opinions and stuff like that, but just here's my opinion. Use, and I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Mills and Ms. Hawley and Catherine Hensley and all the, John Carveli and Carol Hudson. Use our younger picture, please.
No, the best one. Some of our younger pictures is not that nice.
The best one. The best photos.
I say, but use the best photos.
We'll ensure you have final approval.
And you know, we've got to have a photo of the football team that was the only all-state that won in the history and still is in that position.
We may have a volleyball team.
Yeah. So we might need the sports section. Thank you, ladies. This is real exciting, and we're glad to see it happening. Because like you said, Ms. Lydia, we're not going to all be here forever. And so as Ms. Richardson said, we like to see it before we go, hopefully. So thank you so much for what you're doing, and we know it's going to take a little time, but we don't want it to take forever.
Understood. Thank you.
All right. So now, our very favorite chief of operations, Mr. Terrence O'Leary. O'Leary, O'Leary.
I saw who clapped. Good morning, Madam Chair, board members, superintendent, esteemed colleagues in here. Today, we're going to go ahead and review our facilities projects. And while we focus on one where we had opening, we have many projects going forth. And also, all of the planning that surrounds each one of those projects to make sure that we're ready in a five, 10, and 15-year timeframe. So we're going to show a little bit of that as we're going through and our thought processes around that. I'm going to do some introductions because I think it is so important. This is a we thing, meaning all of our departments, whether they're on the academic side or the operations side, have their hands in what you saw at Legacy coming together. Each one from a design, from a planning, from fiscal planning, all of those things matter. And I want to make sure that we take the time to see those individuals, and I'm going to ask them to stand here in a minute. We're going to go through the growth and revitalization project timelines, the construction project updates, also the new Green Zone K8. Again, not the name of the school, it's just how we're preparing for it as well. And then if we have any questions, we'll answer those. So at first, I want to ask these individuals, these are your true construction leaders and project managers of each one of the projects we're going to be discussing today. And that's going to start with our Director of Facilities, Matthew Weber, if you can stand up and stay. Anthony Rake, who is the senior project manager overseeing Western Grove. It'll be the new Green Zone and several of the gyms that you're seeing. And then our hard-working inspectors that have to inspect all of this, our co-administrator, Bob Massa, and Dante Restino. These are just some of the individuals that work on the everyday construction, but there's many more. People like our CFO, Michelle Thomas, and our Director of Purchasing, Kim Albritton. Our food service manager, who works on the planning of what does our cafeterias look like, and that's Deborah Wuest. Wuest, sorry. I just like the U. Also, from a network side, your security cameras, all of the technology that goes in there, and that's Niall Gentry, he's our manager of IT. I want to make sure I get everybody here. Nicole Fogarty, who helps me with all of the planning, working with the city, as you're going to see, roads, infrastructure, all of those types of things. Troy Church, who has to go in and plan all the camera settings along with IT, making sure that all of our facilities have the most state-of-the-art security systems to protect our students. Jim Dunn, who works with the data side of the house, right? We opened a brand-new school, we got to make sure that goes into our system, gets notified all the way up to the state level. Our principals, Todd Smith, David Alfonso, and the illustrious Ms. Green for the new Western Grove K8. All of them, including many others, from our operations sides, the OTL departments, the individuals that sit on the selection committee, which, you know, ranges from Dr. Summers, Dr. Wilde, different departments, Rod Natawa, those types of individuals that help build out this project. We can all sit down, but I appreciate it. So that is the team that really comes together, the we, in making sure we're developing state-of-the-art classrooms. As Dr. Prince has mentioned many times to you, our county continues to grow. We're one of six out of 67 counties that either maintained their growth or are growing. So we want to make sure that we're ready for an A-rated facilities to make sure our students have the very best. In addition to that, often, we have charter schools come in, and unfortunately, we saw one shut down. Well, we have to absorb those students. So in our planning, we need to make sure when students, we have a failing school or one had a shutdown, that we have space for our students to make sure they come back to our public schools and have the opportunity for an education. So building that, knowing that right now, I think it's still 28,808 single-family homes still need to be built. So we're planning towards the future. And as you're aware, we continue to do that data discovery of working with our developers, working with our real estate, making sure we're working with our MGT team to look at, is that growth continuing, happening? And maybe we push back some projects if need be, if it slows down or not. But that's not what we're seeing right now. So as you can see, here are some of the growth and revitalized in projects. Super important that we have that plan because this plan, these timeframes align to our five-year, 10-year, and 15-year growth planning, as you know. It allows us to strategically make sure that we have space available, student seats, where we need them, based upon our growth or based upon the new initiatives the board or the superintendent has us moving forth on. We can't forget all of the amount of work that we've done and all the opportunities that you had to participate. Cass Cafeteria, completed in January of 2025. As you recall, this was bringing on an 11,000-square-foot space auditorium that was multifunctional for our students because they could perform as they did on the ribbon-cutting day, as well as a cafeteria, much-needed cafeteria, because the other one, they had outgrown. So we had finished that one, and I just want to make sure that we track our projects, not just the ones we complete and we forget about it and move on, but the ones that we did complete, and then we move forward. That was completed in 2025, so just like our goals, we'll have a green checkmark. Legacy. So Legacy completed, opened on time, on schedule, on budget, as Dr. Prince loves to say, and keeps me up at night, to be honest with you. No, I'm only teasing. I have a solid team, as you saw. So we completed that, opened it up. The campus is about 262,000 square feet. That's the entire campus. Sometimes you'll see a number like 251,000. That has 80 state-of-the-art classrooms, CTE labs, a state-of-the-art gymnasium, and auditorium. Auditorium holding about 732 seats, and our gymnasium accommodating about 1,532 seats in the bleachers from that. Architects at that time was Single Schultz, and also Core Remnant was that construction manager. And as with any project I do, you have to go back, right? Groundbreaking, if you can recall this, a hot day. Trust me, I know, I'm a big guy, so it was a very hot day on June 19th, 2023. And I agree with Troy, you know, I would like to use my high school, no, grammar school thin pitcher. So anyway, groundbreaking on that day. And recall what it looked like. A clean canvas, ready for a new legacy. But just don't focus just on the building. You'll notice there was no infrastructure. To the right, there was no road, no crosstown. All of that has come together for an opening August 2025. So the importance of it takes the village to create this school, our partners in the county, who own one part of the roadway, and our partners in the city, all of our partners here within the public schools coming together to open Legacy on time from that. Quick view, because some of it wasn't in the back where you could see it, so we focused So that last picture really shows a completed campus, completed roadway, infrastructure, FPNL, all of the internet lines that had to be run out to that school, a completed project. Here, I wanted to show you an active campus, what we would like to see. Here are students enjoying that facility, learning on a daily basis, participating in activities. If you're very, look in the middle there, board member, that is the volleyball team. PE classes, athletic events, all of that's been open since August at that time. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, the first banner that will be hung in the gymnasium will be the Legacy High School Lions volleyball team becoming district champs. And since then, the journey continues. They have two solid wins and the last win over the number-one seed. I am trying to earn in brownie points. Thank you, board member. Start, you're, brownie points for everyone. So please, join them as they continue their journey tomorrow night, Wednesday, 7:00 PM, playing number two, Gainesville.
Got moved to six.
Moved to six. So just wanted to show that. That would be their first banner, and you love to go into a facility, just as Lydia and Dejean were showing, where it brings the history in. And that was their first part of the history, and the great caption aligned, "Let the Legacy Begin." So there we did, opened on 2025, on time, on budget, on schedule.
I just wanted to add, real, as we pause, whenever you open a new school, I don't think, now, remember, I'm not sitting in your chair as board members, but we didn't get any concerns, complaints, you know, my kid can't, you know, go to the school, or I want to, you know, we had to rezone. We were very flexible with regards to families. There were very little hiccups with regards to traffic or issues opening the school. And that was really, as a result, a lot of the work that went in for planning with Terrence, Transportation, also our teams that work with our municipalities to try to make sure this was as seamless as possible. And that same intentionality, you know, we have to use with the work because we're going to have to also make some decisions with regards to the new Western Grove, which that will have a name after today. But with regards to the students that are going to be assigned to that school, so that will be upcoming as well for the board to make determinations, because August of 2026 is going to be upon us very, very quickly, and we'll have to be communicating to families with regards to their options for schools. Okay? Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. I did hear, very, very quickly. So we're on it. So next one we're gonna talk about is our Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, the West Prep. This, too, is exactly the same identical school as Legacy, as we're moving forward. Again, no pun intended, but January nineteenth, just like we did in June nineteenth, we went ahead and had their groundbreaking. Two-hundred-and-sixty-two square feet, just the same as Legacy, eighty classrooms for C T E. The one difference is, and I'll show it to you in the video, is the barn. And the barn is very unique. We did a little bit, bring the past into the future. So we took the steel from the old barn and reused that steel into the new barn, parts of it. We also expanded it. But we did do a little bit of that to bring that program from the past into the future as well. So you'll all able to see that in the video here in a little bit. This school will be on time, on budget. It'll be turned over, we're gonna show you the timeline when we're turning over and a phase plan of how we will be doing that here in the next month. So before we can get there, as you all recall, this was the groundbreaking on one nineteen two thousand and twenty-four. Hundred-and-ten acres cleared, ready to go, a little area of the old roadways that went through the old R O T C wing there. We leveraged that to where we are today. And even this picture, although taken in early October, has completely changed because all of the great weather we have been having has allowed us to pour a lot of the sidewalks, concrete that you don't see right here. So we've been able to go ahead and get that poured. With that said, real quick. So a couple things on there. That was, the uniqueness of the Fort Pierce Westwood build was, it was an active campus. Students are going to school there, making sure they still had access to their fields for athletics. That's why you see the fields already being used out there for football practice, ready for baseball, ready for softball. You also saw some new uniqueness. As you recall, the old campus, the barn was far to the front of the school, away from the school. We've now incorporated that right out back so that the students have that culture of one. We're within the school. So I, hopefully, you were able to see some of that kind of work. And for the fans of baseball, it's one of my favorite features. If you saw the baseball field and it had the palm trees, and right behind it was the water, that was something we had talked about in planning. If you know Candlestick Park out in San Francisco, when a homerun happens, it goes out and people sit in their kayaks to retrieve those homerun balls. So I owe Principal Alfonso a kayak so he can retrieve some of those homerun baseballs as it goes out. With, what you can see here, exactly the same images, top right is the barn, that's right out back, the middle is the auditorium, you can see the pictures where we are. Again, these are earlier pictures, things are getting completed from the interior. And that's what I wanted to show you here on our timelines. This is the latest update timelines, you can see where all the planning, construction, and bidding, all that's complete, site work is, you can see where all the dirt is, we're still finishing that up, that will be done in October, at the end of October, early November. Structure and building envelope, meaning the windows and all of that, is completed. Working on the interior finishes, and we'll be able to show you a plan that we have on transitioning. And then the landscaping, all the additional palm trees and everything, just like you have seen at Legacy, will be in. Move-in date, ah, there it is, I was waiting for it. Our goal is to have the first building one turned over to us first week in November, and then we're gonna explain that right here. We'll have the official move-in date in December and opening for January sixth, two thousand and twenty-six, as the students arrive back from break. So here's a little more granular, right? So as you can see, eleven nineteen, building one complete, we already see a lot of movement in that, and we see it complete, there are, you know, waxing floors, those types of things. Building two, building three, you can see the site work being completed in December first. And then furniture installation, bringing in all the desks and everything for the students around eleven twenty. And those are all important because the faculty and kids are excited. Principal Alfonso has been scheduling times for the teachers to come over and walk through on a Friday after a long week to see their new classrooms and transition. We'll be delivering two weekends in a row, starting in, move-in boxes, obviously, will be sent to the schools so that teachers can pack up their rooms around twelve-six to twelve-eight. The following weekend, we'll start having our first group packed up and start moving over on twelve-twelve, twelve-fifteen, that weekend. The second one, we'll give them another weekend, twelve-twelve to twelve-fifteen. So give them two weekends, right? The goal here is actually giving staff break, right? The holidays are coming, so we wanna make sure that we have that smooth transition. We have been working very much with the principals to make sure that we give them that opportunity. We have a third party that will move all the boxes, all we're asking the teachers to pack them, we'll move them, get them over to your classrooms. So that when, the first day in the new school year, the sixth, that we're ready for the students to arrive. So, opening January two thousand and twenty-six, that will be our goal. We are talking about a time and date for ribbon-cutting, those types of things, we'll update you here shortly. Next.
Wait.
Yes.
Before we move on, I just wanted to take a moment to mention just kind of something exciting that we're working with in conjunction with Indian River State College. And I don't wanna get sidetracked because this is a whole different animal, but we will be making an announcement and a media release soon with regards to the Olympic handball team. So the Olympic handball team is going to be training in the Old Westwood Gym in preparation of the, for the Olympics. The actual team members that are gonna be selected are gonna be moving into Saint Lucie County to undergo all of their training for the two thousand and twenty-eight Olympics. And Saint Lucie Public Schools is gonna be a big part of that. So we're very excited about that. That's gonna be in conjunction with Indian River State College, and we'll be making some further announcements. We just met with the team leaders the other day.
The coach and the C E O.
The coach and the C E O with regards to some, just what this is gonna look like. It was an initial meeting, but we've committed to it, we're very excited. It's a, it's a great opportunity for us as a district, when you're talking about the Olympics and how important the Olympics are and the pride that we take in our country. We also have an exhibition match that we're gonna be promoting, and that is going to be at Fort Pierce Central High School in November. Terrence, you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So it will be an opportunity, it's November fifteenth, they'll be leveraging one of our facilities, and they're bringing in our armed forces. So the match will be between Air Force and Army. So they will be bringing in, as our Olympic handball players will be moving into our county, they would have a, just a scrimmage between the two armed forces, so bringing down the Air Force and Army teams to have a competitive tournament on the fifteenth.
And we are looking to, you know, host not just these exhibitions, but the Olympic team, their families, and some of the families have children that will be attending our schools. And this is a great opportunity for Saint Lucie Public Schools to create more awareness with what the Olympics, what they mean, and also even for our students to go and see some of the training that's going to occur in our county as we have these athletes prepare for the Olympics. But I wanted to just pause for that because that will be at the Old Westwood site before we pivot and continue into our construction, but we will be providing the board more information. This has come together very quickly for us, and we will be providing a media release as well, but I wanted you to hear it from us first here today in a public workshop. All right? All right, sorry. You didn't expect that one, did you?
We are flexible, Dr. Prince, and all we do. So exciting, cuz today will be the naming, and no longer will I be calling it Western Grove K eight, and you get the honor to name that school. But let's move on to another growth project, and that is Western Grove K eight. And as you know, in March, we had another ribbon-cutting, so we're getting very good at having ribbon-cuttings and groundbreakings and all of the traditional festivities around opening a new school. There are the three names that you will be voting on. This is a site that will house, is capable of housing just under nineteen-hundred students. It's very similar to all of our K eights that we have throughout the county, everything from Sam Gaines to West Gate, it's the exact same prototype. This is part of our growth project going forth. And these are some of the first images. As you can see, walls are up, the underground utilities have been put in place. We are using a different type of, instead of tilt wall, as you recall, for Legacy and Fort Pierce Westwood, we're using what we call C M U, which is Concrete Masonry Unit. Come on, guys, impressive there. And that's block, right? So cinder blocks on top of cinder blocks, and why we chose that was, again, we are using lots of local talent, and now this is a different type of skill set, so it gives us different types of employees to do the concrete block for us. It allows us to also work a little bit quicker, we're not in getting in each other's way with all the tilt walls and the big cranes coming in and trying to raise the walls up. This is build it as they come, and you can see some of that work there in building six as we're going through and raising, going vertical in our world of the new Western Grove K eight. You can see the timeline here, the planning and designing, the concrete, the contractor selection, bidding process, all has been completed, the site work has been ongoing, and we kicked that off, even what you saw at the groundbreaking from March of two thousand and twenty-five, the structural work, the building envelopes, all of that is yet to come. We are working on an August two thousand and twenty-six opening date to make sure that that meets that timeline. So built into that schedule is moving quicker, escalation, if we need it, six days, seven days, whatever we need to do, make sure that we're on time for those students going out to the new Western K eight there. In addition to that, I just wanted to add, we also are working with the roadway, that will be opened in April of two thousand and twenty-six, so they're building that roadway to the school, just like we had to do for Legacy. We are now, that's in progress, working with the land developer to make sure, I think that road is now Sun Vista Boulevard, that was, be the official name. So that work, we'll make sure it's ready to open so that we can go ahead and make sure that students can go to the new school. Next, the C A Moore K eight gymnasium. I'm first sharing with you the actual site plan so you can kind of get your understanding of where we're at. You see Twenty-Ninth Street where the current front of the school is, you have Avenue I and in the back Thirty-first Street. Off to the west is Avenue G, but you can see how we're laying that out, that is very deliberate. You can see that there's additional parking in the back, bus loops coming in the back for your middle-school students. This is a transition, we have already been open for two years, we had a sixth grade year prior, now we have the seventh grade coming in, so as the students materially upgrade levels, we're adding in the construction. As you know, we're going through, and I wanna give you some of the renderings of it, but some of the unique opportunities, the way we're developing it, is to make sure that it's available on the weekends for community use. You can see that in the back, we can seal the rest of the school and make available the actual gymnasium there in blue. The green, because middle school, will have middle-school athletics, soccer, volleyball, and those types of things, putting in that facility, also new playgrounds in pink, and P E facilities there in blue, courts and things for the kids to use. This gymnasium is identical to the gymnasiums we built at West Gate, all of our schools that we build, this is exactly the same model going forth. So here's some renderings of what that looks like. The top left, you'll see the new school, C A Moore Academy of Success. That building has already been marked with that signage, so even though it's in the rendering, that is on the school today. We went ahead and make sure all the signage was updated with it. You can see some of the facilities that will be leveraged for P E. And in addition to there, on the top right, that's the actual gymnasium, and incorporating that gymnasium in design, very focused and thoughtful, is to make sure it blends right in with the current school. And then again, you see the athletic facilities for P E or for their athletic programs to make available to the community and to the students there at C A Moore. So where are we? We are completed with the planning and designing, we've been working with the architect there, that's E D B, as we have been moving forward. Upcoming here, we'll do the construction management selection, that will be going out, and you'll be part of that process. That will be going out here in November twenty-fifth so that we can select new process. Know that we are currently selecting the new K eight, so that is out, that's where the code of silence comes, the new construction management, I'll explain that as we move on to that project. But you can see the move-in date here is December of two thousand and twenty-six, so that will be ready for the students. Again, it is an active campus, so we making sure that everything is safety first for students and in isolation when we build it. So we have drop areas away from the school that won't interfere with the current school daily activities. Palm Point, December two thousand and twenty-seven, it's the exact same building, colors may be different. We have a little bit of a site plan, again, that may adjust depending as we get into our planning process, but I wanted you to be aware that this is what we've been saying to you and have mentioned. So right behind the December two thousand and twenty-six, we're rolling right in for the gymnasium out at Palm Point Elementary. And again, there you can see that we would probably do that starting next year, and we already have the plans in place for it. So the new K eight, green zone, a revitalization of the area. This slide is the exact same slide that Dr. Prince shared with you about our plans of working in and combining Dan McCarty, Lawnwood, and Saint Lucie into a new K eight campus that will meet all students' future needs. If you notice, some of the images look exactly the same as the one we're building out in tradition, Western Grove. It is, it's exactly the same. We wanna make sure that we're providing a first-class facility to all students in Saint Lucie Public Schools. Remember, this will be a cost-neutral, as we're moving forward, build, and it's helpful in our efficiencies to our taxpayers. By that I mean, some of the older systems at Lawnwood, that takes a lot of operational costs from your H V A C systems, those types of things, consolidating some of our transportation routes, these schools are within a one-block area of each other, so we can consolidate that down, and then having opportunity for our staff to work at that new kindergarten K eight or wherever else they may wanna work within our county. With that said, I wanted to give you a site plan, and if you look closely, that is Thirteenth Street, so it will still face Thirteenth Street, just like Saint Lucie Elementary does currently. To the south, that's Eleventh Street, and those are important because we're able to distribute the traffic between Thirteenth Street and Eleventh Street. Bus traffic going on the Eleventh Street, and then the parent pickup going out on the Thirteenth Street. To the right, there's your current Dan McCarty Middle School. To the left, there- To the left there is Dale Casson's. So you can see, we're sitting right in the middle, and you'll notice some of the same exact facilities that we're doing at all of our K eights and including the gymnasium. One exception. We have a current chiller plant there in the top left. It's the square next to where Dale Casson's is. We're going to leverage that, so there is some cost savings. We put that in. That chiller plant was already running, St. Lucie Elementary, Dale Casson's, and Dan McCarty. So we will re-pipe that to the new school. So there will be cost savings to the overall construction project. Smart planning, fiscally responsible, those are the directives the superintendent gives us on a daily basis, and that's just an example of us using that, which are very expensive. How much does a chiller plant cost? Anywhere from eight to ten million dollars, depending upon where we're going. So Building Six, which is our current chiller in any of the plans we're building, will not be needed. So Kim Albritton will be talking to you about the R F Q. We've already, we're moving on this. We've already advertised that starting September thirtieth. We had our pre-bid conference with all of the interested construction managers, so they came on the sixteenth. They had questions on the seventeenth. This Thursday, August thirtieth, is when we'll get their proposals back. That is why we're in the cone of silence, and Kim will articulate that to you. We'll then shortlist the firms November fifth, and then hear their presentations on November thirteenth. We will be bringing that potentially either December or January back to the board for the decision. But as you can see, we are moving on this building pretty quick. We're looking to put a shovel in the ground in twenty-six and opening August of 2028, having that school ready. As you can see, the Dan McCarty will look exactly like our other K eight models throughout the county. The front office, we have six buildings with the exception, we wouldn't need the H V A E, so a five-building build, two-story. So this is the administration wing, just like you, if you went into Westgate, or if you go into Sam Gaines, same concept, bottom floor administrations office, top floor academics, then two academic wings over to a cafeteria with some arts programs in the back there, chorus and band, and then the gymnasium, as we've been discussing, all with the same ones coming forth. As you can see, we are planning, you know, been planning all along, picking the contractor here in November, working through all the bid and mobilization, and then being prepared to open that in August twenty, twenty-eight. So Green Zone, check, move it on. This is really important. When we discuss the planning and everything else, our true legacy is shaped by where we place our trust and resources. We choose to invest in every child because we believe in the limitless potential within each child. For us, success is not reserved for a few. It is a promise we extend to all, and just a little take on our treasure hunt, without exception. By that I mean, Legacy Growth Project, a rebuild of Fort Pierce Westwood. Western Grove K eight, soon to be named here, no pressure, to our new Green Zone K eight off of Thirteenth Street. All those growth projects are outlined. Legacy completed, Western Grove, Southern Grove, looking in August of twenty-ninth if our growth continues, and then Wilder High School out there off of Glades Cut Off if we need it, will be around the August thirty, thirty-three, and hopefully I am still here, unlike the timeline where everybody else is leaving. Hint, Dr. Prince, just a little bit of a hint. Anyway, revitalization and schools reimagined, whoops, I apologize, Fort Pierce Westwood, opening for our students in January of 2026. Our C M, C A Moore K eight, twenty, December of twenty-six. Palm Point, December of twenty-seven. Our K eight opening in August of 2028. If needed, our Village, Village Green K eight concept, we haven't really talked about it, but it's something in our plans that's part of it, in August of twenty-nine if needed. And then the expansion buildings at Legacy and Fort Pierce Westwood. Again, those are all plans, but if needed, as we discussed earlier, will be ready. So knowing at five, ten, fifteen years, we need to be ready to provide a first-class education for all students here in St. Lucie Public Schools. And with that said, Dr. Prince, I'll be happy to take any present questions, or do you want Kim?
I was just going to make a comment. You know, why are we putting out an R F P for a K eight? We haven't sold any property. We haven't, we haven't gotten any of those things done because we're not going to hesitate. We're going to function with a sense of urgency. Whenever we, the board pulls the trigger on, you know, the next phase of this, we have to be ready to put shovels in the dirt, and, and we are going to function with a sense of urgency. You know, all of our students deserve a first-class building. You know, you are where you put your, your resources, and, you know, as we build in new communities, we will rejuvenate, revitalize, and renew in our oldest communities because we're going to make a commitment to all children in St. Lucie County and not make a commitment just because you're moving into a new area. So, you know, I appreciate the board's vision for what the expectation is for what happens in our county, and I want to commend all of the, the gentlemen that Terrence introduced because they are, I don't know how these guys sleep because they've got so much going on all, all across our, our county. But with that being said, Mr. O'Leary is here. Hopefully both of us will be here for a long time, and, and he'll take any questions.
Perfect.
I'll just make one comment, thank you. I just wanted to say to our construction crew right here, everybody that stood right there, five of you, just thank you because, but like Dr. Prince, I'm looking and listening to Mr. O'Leary, and my head is just spinning, it's like, you know, it's hard to keep up with, with all this construction. So I just wanted to say thank you, you know, for the hard work and for the sleepless nights, I'm sure, you know, and just thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And for the construction guys, don't get a false sense of security. We got a lot of work to do. So I did want to remind our board members of, of the law, and Ms. Albritton's going to come up because we are, once we put this out, we are in a cone of silence, and I just wanted Kim to go through this very briefly before we name our school of, of what the law is and what the requirements of the board are with regards to the cone of silence. And Ms. Albritton, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Good morning, everybody. So I'm just going to do a quick refresher. I know we've all seen this before, but it can't hurt to go through it real quick as we're in the process now. On this slide, I'm showing you what is our timeline for our Green Zone K eight and where we're at currently. So right now, where you see the arrows pointing over, we are in the cone of silence is because we're out for advertisement for our construction managers. We will probably be in that cone of silence. We're anticipating December, January for a board approval. Once it is approved by the board, we're no longer under that cone of silence. So you can talk to them, you just can't talk to them about this specific project. We do have projects going on with a lot of these companies, so it's unrealistic to not talk at all, but just not talk about this project. So from there, we would just go through the rest of the project. We anticipate pre-construction going through August of twenty-six. We'll bring the board approval for the G M P hopefully around that same timeframe with construction going through April of twenty-eight and a move-in date of August twenty, twenty-eight.
Kim, real quick, can you go back to that last slide?
Certainly.
So with regards to cone of silence, do we anticipate bringing, you know, part of the process, a recommendation to the board like at, like a February board meeting on the construction manager?
We're hoping at the latest January.
Okay.
So as a reminder, we are bound by the Consultants Competitive Negotiation Act. You'll hear us refer to it as C C N A for short because that's a lot of words to say all the time. It guides how we select our construction management firms when we're using a C M R. It's an at-risk project. We've talked about this one quite a few times, so it, just a refresher. This is the actual process that we go through to follow the law. Right now, we're in step one. We're advertising the R F Q. We did host the pre-bid meeting, and then this week we will receive the submittals from the interested firms. Once we have that, the committee goes through and scores independently. We do have another public meeting where we rank them, and then most often we'll have an interview on the larger projects they will interview. Then after that, we notice the first-place firm. We move to negotiations with that firm, and then we bring the recommendation to the board for approval. Just as a reminder, this was the evaluation criteria we had presented and brought to you during two thousand, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. We used the revised criteria on the Western Grove selection, and if you recall, we focused heavily in these three areas, the volume of work, local participation, and the certified M B E. We also adjusted the interview criteria slightly, so it's going to be the same criteria we used on Western Grove for the Green Zone K eight project.
Kim, I'm sorry, can you go back one?
This one?
One more, back one. There, the committee, committee evaluates. Just also want to let the board that we, you know, one thing I try to do is learn from mistakes of the past. So I always want to make sure that we make adjustments with our committee, that we have different representation, so that we don't have the same folks on the committee, you know, all the time. So we are making some adjustments to that so that, you know, we, we make changes. The process doesn't change, but we want to make sure that the, the individuals that are scoring and doing the representation in the committee, that we make some adjustments to that. Sorry, Kim.
No worries. This is just the schedule again, reiterating the cone of silence, and we'll have the school ready for use August of 2028. That's it.
Okay, board members, any questions at all regarding Ms. Aubrey's presentation? Seeing none, Ms. Aubrey, thank you so much for going back over all the necessary things we need to know. Dr. Prince?
Okay. Lastly, I'm going to bring up Dr. Wild, and this is the culminating event before we have the culinary cook-off that I think some of you are going to be attending, that we will be heading to after this process. So Dr. Wild is going to facilitate this.
Good morning, everyone. I think this is the most exciting part of the agenda today because it is always such an honor to be part of naming a new school, and the name will last for many years into the future. I want to congratulate Principal Green. She did an amazing job, and I know she presented to you at the last board meeting. She facilitated a very eager committee of fifteen community members, many of whom are watching online right now, excited to hear the outcome. The committee's work generated thirty-four potential names, and you have been presented with the top three recommendations, and that was shared with you at the October fourteenth board meeting. So today, you have the pleasure, and you have a ballot card in front of you, and you will have the opportunity to rank order your top three choices in order, first, second, and third, and then Dr. Prince will tally the results and make the announcement. And I know Latonya Green and the committee are very excited to hear the results. So everybody should see a card in front of you. Please mark your first, second, and third choice, and then I can collect it and hand it to Dr. Prince.
Since he's tallying, I didn't put my name on it. I forgot to put my name on mine.
Were you supposed to put your name on it?
For public record, we should.
Uh-uh. Now you got to figure who's this who.
All right.
You got, okay. Hopefully we got the right ones. Going back to this.
Dr. Wild, pull up a chair so that you can help confirm.
Yes, we can.
We don't have an accounting firm for this? Maybe we should have Michelle come up.
[laughter]
Unanimous, wow.
So every single board member selected the same name, and that is number one, Tradition Lakes K eight. That is unanimous. And, and Madam Chair, that, that concludes our meeting, or not concludes, it just concludes my portion.
Okay, okay. Well, members, anyone make, want to make any comments at all before we get ready to close? All right, seeing none, I'm going to ask every one of you would consider joining in with prayer for Jamaica and the islands that surround Jamaica and this hurricane that's heading that way. And I am definitely a woman of prayer, and I believe that God answers prayers. So if you would just take a moment and reach out with me to the Lord. Great and mighty God, we know that you are able to do all things. Lord, we lift up Jamaica and the surrounding islands. Already has been said that three lives have been claimed from Haiti, and that the Dominican Republic is also going through. All of the people of those islands, God, we are asking you to have mercy and protect them through this storm, and we thank you, knowing that you're well able to do that. So Father God, whatever it takes, we're asking, Lord, that you have mercy on us as a, as a nation, and the lives of these people. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen. We are adjourned.